Very good. Thank you, the Abell here. We are calling this public hearing to order. It is Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, Star Wars Day, as some call it, May 4th with you. It's 5:30 PM. We're conducting a hybrid public hearing here in two matters with one trustee, Mr. Weedman, appearing over Zoom. Mr. LaBarbara and I are here in the room, along with the administrator, Kevin Clark and Skylar Miller. We'll have members of the public participating over Zoom as well. We have two cases to hear this evening. First of all, let's just, I guess Mr. Porter's not in here. Mr. Warwick, would you call the roll to confirm who's here?
Mr. LaBarbara?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here. And Mr. Weedman?
Oh, Mr. Weedman, I'm sorry.
Present.
Thank you. All right. Very good. First, we'll move into the 2021-02-MA, which relates to, the applicant is Coogler Mill Square LLC. This relates to what I understand will be called the Oaks of Kenwood Apartments. And first of all, as to anyone who intends to testify at this hearing, let's swear you in first. If you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to turn this over then to Mr. Miller for him to begin the presentation as to what we have to consider here. Skylar?
Yeah. All right. As stated, sir, this is, this is case 2021-02-MA. Applicant is Coogler Mill Square LLC. This is for the, it's actually an existing multifamily apartment complex, now known as the Oaks of Kenwood. It's located at 8469 Voorhees Lane. It actually has access off of Beach Street, north of, north of Coogler Mill. So, the site is just over seven acres with, it does have frontage on Voorhees Lane, but again, the, the access point is actually on Beach. Topography is generally flat, less than 10 feet elevation change across the entire development. The existing dwelling units per acre, the density, is 9.36, with the applicant's request moving that to 16.74. And to go into a little more detail here, the applicant is essentially, they're requesting a major adjustment to the existing SPUD, which has been in existence since the 1960s to, to improve and expand the multifamily development from 68 units to 118 units. They're actually proposing to do that. There we go. I'll go into a little, little detail here, the location of the site. What you have here highlighted in, in red and orange is the property owned by Coogler Mill Square LLC. Again, the access point for this is off of Beach here. This is Coogler Mill Road. This is Voorhees Lane. There is actually emergency access here, but this is gated. And in the new proposal, that'll also be gated. So, surrounding this property is Zoned Single Family, that's C Residential, single family, with the exception of this piece here, which is the F Light Industrial District. We actually just had a case on that site. That's the Danpers and Lubbers Building, where DoorDash has just moved in and is, is operating their facility on the, the south end of that site. So, we've, we've been looking at some projects in this area. Okay. Right. I'm probably going to stay on this one for, for quite a bit, just because it gives us a, a good overview of what's going on. These, these kind of grayed out buildings that are, that are numbered are the existing buildings. We have, I believe that's five, two and a half story buildings here, 1, 2, 3, and then we have two perimeter, 4 and 5. There's also a two-unit duplex here that, in this proposal, is being raised. And they are adding, excuse me, 52 additional units. There's a two-story building here at the, at the southernmost point of the, of the development and in the, the northwestern corner. We're calling these two buildings, they are, they are fully connected, but it's a firewall. So, there's two additional buildings, B and C here, that are proposed to be three-story. And then we have D and E on the, the east side of the property, which is another three-story building. With this, with this expansion, we're looking at removing the, the existing pool, creating a, a more defined stormwater basin here for detention. And there's going to be an internal parking, parking lot that, that creates a loop. Okay? We do have two dumpster locations indicated on the, on the site. One here on the, the far west of the property and another here, kind of generally in the, the northeastern portion of the site, just, just beside building D. So, as far as amenities on the site, we're looking at for, for the number of, for the number of units and the density, we are looking at a, a site that, that has a high level of open space, green space, as well as a dog park.
Okay. The dog park is new or existing?
I believe the dog park's new. So, I guess I can talk about the, the progression as this went through zoning commission. The zoning commission actually heard this case twice. It was, it was tabled the first time. There were some, there were some questions about the initial submittal. There was not a photometric plan submitted. That's the, that's the lighting plan for the site. And there was also some concern about, especially with the, the newer buildings being around the perimeter of the site, why we're moving from two and a half story to, to three-story. Generally, if you're going to have the, the higher buildings, if we're talking about a clean slate, a piece of property that's developed, the higher buildings are going to be further away from, you know, any existing residential. So, the applicant did answer those, or tried to address those issues. The first is with a, an elevation detail. What you're looking at here in this, this upper left corner of the, of this, of this sheet is an elevation of the existing two and a half story multifamily building. And this is a comparison to the new three-story. So, while there is a, a little bit of an increase in height, it's actually pretty marginal. I think depending on elevations, we're looking at three to five feet in height change. So, this one, let me cut back over. This is actually the cross-section that we're looking at from point A, well, this line AA. And then the other cross-section we're going to be looking at is, is here, line B. So, again, this is, this is the cross-section at A where you can see the elevation difference. And then here we have B. This is the, the northeastern corner again. This is the approximate elevation of the existing single-family homes and their distance away from the property line. This is actually the, the property line for the site. This is the two-story, two-story duplex that's, that's to be raised and the new proposed three-story building at, at the, it's the same building design, same elevation. Okay? Applicant is also submitting details of the, of the dumpster enclosures, which are consistent with, with current zoning standards. There's also a signed, or excuse me, not signed, a fence detail here. And when I go back to that plan, we'll, we'll show where that's, where that's running. So, there was actually two photometric plans that were submitted and I'll kind of go through the, the evolution here. If I were to zoom in on this one, generally our code allows for up to .5 foot candles of light to spill over on the property. This, this plan does show, I believe, .4 at the, at the greatest extent of spillage and past the property line. And, and the reason why you see that, even though it meets our, our standards, you have three sets of, of lights here that are, are up against the building and shining northerly, across the parking lot and ultimately to the north past the property line. You also have these two heads here, which are kind of omnidirectional, if you will, and with some spill over here as well. After working with the applicant, we were able to adjust this plan. So, now we have perimeter lighting. One of the best places I can think of in the area right now to, to look at this is the Mercedes-Benz site, where they have the lighting on the perimeter. All of the light is, is being flooded back into the site. And what that does for us is it creates a, a more defined separation between the dark area behind the lights. So, this is Plan A where you can see that it is spilling over somewhat to the secondary, which is more dark on the backside. So, by reorienting those lights, we're, we're improving the photometric plan, reducing spill over, and I believe it's, it's at 0.0 all the way around now.
In the northwest corner, there's a pond on the earlier diagram. Is that going to be fenced off in, in some way? Because there's no light back there on this plan, at least, not that we could add to the lighting, but is there a safety concern as to that?
No, we, there's, there's, there's no requirements for, for fencing or barricading stormwater detention. And I don't believe this is meant to be an actual pond. That's just, it, it's going to be dry retention.
Okay.
We can have the applicant address that and clarify when it's, when it's their time to speak. But I believe it's dry retention. Okay. So, you know, I, I think that there was a lot of effort. The other thing we should talk about is landscaping. This, this site well exceeds our landscaping requirements. The landscaping plan is actually two-part.
Just a moment. Someone has their microphone live on the Zoom call with a dog in the background. If you could mute your microphone, we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, there's actually a, a two-part landscaping detail. One is the tree planting and then the other is the shrub. This is, again, in excess of, of what's required per, per zoning resolution. So, that's providing for, you know, some sound mitigation as well as, as well as light. And then I'm, I don't believe the plans I have indicate or clearly define where the, where the fence is going to, to go. Let's see if I can get a better detail of it. But I believe we're looking at, from this, from this emergency access point along the northern property line and then to the west, we can get clarification about the, the south and eastern property lines from the, from the applicant. So, I know this was commented on at the zoning commission, but I don't, I don't have those notes with me. So, in short, six-foot privacy fence, excessive plantings. I, I don't have any major concerns with, with light pollution moving into the residential area. The zoning commission ultimately chose to deny this application. It was a split vote, 3-2. While they, they all spoke well of the, of the overall design and they believed that the height concerns were addressed from the first meeting, they ultimately believed that the density, which is at 16.7, was in excess of what was typically allowed under our zoning code of 14.5. Now, because this is an SPUD, there's specific language in, in the zoning resolution that allows the trustees to approve densities above 14.5 because this is actually with the PUD2, PUD1 and PUD, excuse me, PUD1 and PUD2 are administrative site design reviews. Okay? It's an administrative process. The SPUD is actually a legislative action of the Board of Trustees. So, we are effectively changing the zoning on this property versus just, just site review. With that being said, we're allowed to use the discretion of the board to increase density. So, with that being said, staff is making a recommendation to approve this. This is a, overall, a, a good design for the, for the site. It is maximizing, it is certainly maximizing the, the density on this development, but it's doing so in a way that is, you know, maintaining as much open space as possible with increased landscaping, additional thought and consideration for, for landscaping. And with these, with these new structures are going to come improved infrastructure within the site and within the other, the rest of the area. The, both sewer and water are going to have to be upgraded in this area. And those improvements are going to be a benefit to the site as, you know, as well as the general surrounding area.
At the 14 and a half units per acre, which you said was the existing rule, going to 16.7. If I'm doing the math right, so basically there are about 15 apartments over roughly for the seven-acre site, what would normally be permitted, so 15 out of 118 planned.
Right.
In other words. Okay.
So, the, the question came up, and this is, this is kind of how the conversation went, with, of height and density within the, with the zoning commission. You know, the question was, is, well, can we just take the top, the top story off of the three, three-story buildings? That reduces them by 16, then they're under the 14.5. The applicant, between the first and second meetings, decided to address the height. You know, the height is the, is the immediate impact on the surrounding area. And they're showing that, you know, even though we are getting closer to the property lines, they're, they're within a certain, you know, within a certain margin, the, you know, the relative same height as the, as the existing buildings. So, if, if the concern is height, I think that was addressed to the satisfaction of zoning commission. Density in and of itself is just a number. You know, we control density through the PUD process, through our zoning resolution to mitigate, you know, secondary impacts, you know, additional parking, you know, infrastructure that can't handle, you know, that load within an area, you know, possible sound pollution, additional traffic, what, what have you. I, I think those, those, those tangible impacts have been addressed, you know, at least reasonably well. And I don't see a, a significant difference or change improvement to the plan, if you will, by reducing this by, by 16 units.
Before we turn to the applicant then, this is in your report, but I know you got outside agency comments, including from the schools.
We do.
As to you here.
Yep. So, it is, it is standard practice to, to reach out to county agencies as well as our own internal departments to, to get outside comments. There were no significant comments. No one was opposed to this. We have, we have MSD and the Greater Cincinnati Water Works, who do have extensive comments on this. But that is, that really has to do with design and upgrading the infrastructure, you know, in the area to, to accommodate, you know, the, the new requirements. Those, those are going to be required by the applicant, you know, no matter how much density we allow them to have. And if we move forward, there's nothing in this approval that exempts them from that standard. So, those issues are going to be addressed. As far as the school, although it's not a typical requirement of us, and maybe it's something we should look at as, as making standard in the future, is giving the schools the opportunity to speak. We did reach out because that was a question from zoning commission. The superintendent of Deer Park Community Schools, you know, came back. What's that?
Jay Phillips?
Yes. They did come back and they said that they had no problem with the overall development. They just wanted to make sure there weren't any amendments that might affect their, their revenue.
Right. I saw the letter.
They were not offering any.
Right. I saw the letter and the materials you shared with us. And he seemed somewhat enthusiastic almost, I would say, which surprised me with the population increase the school might face. So...
Well, I think they have the capacity and they, you know, they're, they're looking for students now. So, there, there have been, and you were given, at, at least up to yesterday or maybe this morning, your packets have been updated with, with any comments from the public that, that came in written. We had two, and I believe both, both of the, both of the members of the public will have an opportunity to speak tonight. They're here. But we've had two members of the public that have, have been active in all this entire process. We've had a few more reach out to us by email, you know, speaking about their concerns. Again, I think most of those concerns have been addressed. You know, we're talking about, you know, noise, noise pollution, traffic lights, you know, and just general lighting from the, you know, from the site.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Yeah. The playground, there's a playground on that, on that land. I saw a playground back there.
Uh, dog park?
It looked like a playground back there when we were driving around. Is that maybe on somebody's property next door? Is that going to?
There's a pool there now. Is that part of the existing?
Yeah, I'll try and...
And then another question is that?
Oh, there might be, yeah, there is a playground right there.
Is that going to, I would imagine there?
I didn't spread with the building. Yeah, that's, that's right where the, I believe that's, I believe that's buildings B and C. The pool, the pool is being removed as well as any play structures.
And the gate on worries will remain, remain closed or locked or?
Yes, that is going to be for emergency access only. So, there'll, there'll be a gate there. And then our fire department has something, you know, installed called a Knox box. And basically, it's just a secure, you know, key box that we've got, we've got access to, to the gate lock.
Mr. Weedman, any questions for Mr. Miller?
About this time.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the applicant then. Who is here to speak for the applicant?
Hi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. My name's Alex Betch. I'm with Bear Becker. I'm a land planner and I'm here representing the applicant. And we also have Kirk, Kirk Koppenhofer and Chuck Thornton, who are members of the application as well. So, I certainly appreciate you guys giving us the time to speak today. Skylar, I really appreciate the presentation and the introduction into the project. I think you, you covered most of the bases. I'll just touch on a few things briefly and then I'll turn it over to Chuck and Kirk, who may chime, chime in with a few things as well. Like Skylar mentioned, just kind of going through the timeline and the history of, of the project so far, we originally submitted to the township on February 16th. And during that planning commission meeting, the, the public voiced some of their concerns with the plan as well, the commissioners, as Skylar touched on. Some of the items that we had marked down from the public included sanitary sewer smells on adjacent property. And we believe, you know, with the upgrades to the public, you know, there's not necessarily too much we can do with off-site smells per se, but with the upgrades to the, to the public infrastructure that'll be necessary on this project as well as the improvements on-site. And theoretically, the more flow you have, it should force things through the pipe more quickly and hopefully alleviate some of those smells. So, one of the other comments was current stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties. And what we think with the, with the upgrades to the storm system on-site and also the question that came up earlier, the basin, the, the new proposed basin would be a dry basin that would be designed per the current standards and regulations that those stormwater runoff issues would be alleviated as well. There were some general privacy concerns with noise and light pollution, including visual, but potential visuals to the dumpster enclosures. And we think those are addressed with the, the landscape buffers that we're proposing also being supplemented with existing trees that we're going to preserve wherever possible as well as the privacy fence, the six-foot-high privacy fence that Skylar mentioned, which would run all along the western property line and the northern property line, which we, we believe is the most ideal situation, placement of that privacy fence. So, between those two things, we think the, the dumpster enclosures are completely shielded from adjacent view sheds. The last one was light pollution and Skylar went over the photometric plan. So, I won't touch on that too much, but some other, some other aspects of that lighting plan. Skylar mentioned the low property line readings. We're also using, proposing LED light bulbs that are very warm and soft in color. It's approved by the Dark Sky Association, which basically means there's no impact to the night sky or your ability to view stars at night. And it's also strategic in how it's placed with the, and Skylar mentioned this a little bit as well, how it's directional and downward facing away from the property lines to avoid that impact as well. Some of the other items, mentioned the school district had reviewed the plans and is favorable to the proposed development at this density. In terms of general layout, it is a, a bit of a challenging site given the amount of easements and utilities that are running throughout it. So, we, we wanted to maximize the site as best we could. And that's kind of the history of how the buildings ended up where they are. But we also think it's supplemented with an abundance of open space. We're, we're far above the required percentage of open space on the site. This vehicular circulation, circulation is improved, better access for fire and trash trucks to navigate through the site. Pedestrian circulation is improved with new sidewalks and, and new connectivity opportunities in the amenity area, which is sort of scattered around the site, is now centrally located. So, it's accessible for everyone in the community. One, one, one last item too is the, is the placement of buildings B, C, D and E. We did want to angle, for example, buildings B and C, angle it towards the long corner of the site rather than running it parallel to one of the property lines, which would have a greater impact on the adjacent properties. So, we tried to strategically place that angle so that the windows are looking into the long corner of the site rather than directly at any of those houses. And then as Skylar mentioned on D and E, the existing townhomes or duplex building were proposing be demolished and then D and E would actually sit further away from that property line. And we're setting those back as far as, as we can. There is a hillside on the backside of those buildings. I think, I do, one last thing I'll mention and then I'll turn it over to Chuck. It is important, we did want, given the amount of costs associated with the, the public and private infrastructure that the applicant's going to have to pay for, they wanted to achieve a certain level of density in order to offset those costs and spread the cost across the site. So, that was important to them. And I will, Bill Mies was one of the commissioners who was in favor of the project. And I think he has a good understanding of, of costs associated with real estate projects and, you know, ways to, to try and, and offset those costs. Because the applicant wants to have this to be a nice development and, you know, in order to achieve some of the things they want to achieve, they need to achieve a certain yield as well. So, thank you very much for, for your time and I'll turn it over to Chuck Thornton at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming you can all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As Alex indicated, I believe we would have come to you tonight with a favorable recommendation from the zoning commission had we either compromised or backed off on density. And the reason we didn't do that is we wanted to upgrade beyond what was actually required by fencing, landscaping, drainage, dumpster improvements, lighting, everything that the zoning commission wanted us to do. We went overboard, I believe, and we didn't back off on density, which I believe is the only reason we didn't get a better vote than three to two. And I believe that the people who understood the costs associated with this development and upgrading this development and the cost being spread over the additional units that we're requesting, they understood that. And I never heard the zoning commission members that had a problem with that, even though they were in favor of everything else, including the three-story buildings, they didn't seem to have a problem with because we took advantage of the topography. B and C, the topography slants down. And that's why those buildings really are not much taller than the existing buildings that are already in place. But the people who I think understood cost, understood that if you're going to really create a really nice project and spread the cost of the, cost over the units themselves and keep the rents as low as possible, it's necessary to have the maximum number of units that we're requesting. And we're trying to keep rents at a favorable level for everybody, not just the people that are going to be renting the new units, but also the cost of the existing units. And I believe we have done that. I think we have addressed everything, drainage, stormwater. Amenities are being improved and the dumpsters, structures are being improved, fencing's being improved, landscaping is, is tremendous. And the green spacing, we have been able to keep green spaces at a maximum with this development. So I'd really like you to consider the density issue as something that's really necessary if we're going to really create a wonderful project with affordable rents. Thank you very much. And I'd like to turn this over to Kirk.
Thank you.
Yep. Hi, everyone. Thanks, Chuck. Thanks for letting us present tonight. I apologize I'm in the car. There's a baseball game that might or may not get canceled, so gotta be ready to get going. But I just wanted to emphasize, you know, the, the, I'm representing Kugler Mill Square and there are people involved with Kugler Mill Square. They're very committed to the area and have been for, for basically their entire lives. They grew up there. They've invested in the area significantly over the years. And they really are committed to this area and making it nicer. And I think, you know, it's, it's not a project where we're just looking to polish it up and then, and then flip it. We're really looking to, to maintain this and keep it within the group for the long haul. And again, it just goes back to the commitment to the area.
All right. Anything else from the applicants to present? We'll, we'll have some questions for you, I'm sure. All right, gentlemen, questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So I met with a number of people who live around that area. And some of them talked about water runoff, which I think your, your detention will be probably helpful for them. The common denominator was a sewer smell, which I think, Alex, you may have mentioned. And I guess I'm trying to find out with all the existing improvements in infrastructure to sewer and water, will you, will you be capable of eliminating that sewer odor? Is that part of the plan? Is it coming off that property or is it coming from somewhere else? I mean, I don't really know, but the people, the people I talked to have told me that they think it's coming off that property.
Yeah, I would say it's tough to say without knowing exactly where it's coming from. I know Judy, I think, is on the call, so maybe she could help us locate a little better. But if it is coming off the site, I think with the improvements to the sanitary sewer system, the increased flow, that it should alleviate that smell.
Okay. And then these are one and two bedroom units, correct?
Correct.
And what's the, what's the rent? You got a square foot rent per square feet or rent just generally speaking?
Well, the current market rents on the existing apartments are eight seventy-five for the one-bedroom and nine ninety-five for the two-bedroom. These new units might be slightly higher than that, just because they're newer apartments, but they would be comparable.
Okay, thanks. The last thing is I think you guys did a really good job of, of addressing the, the light spellage using the dark sky compliant lights, LEDs. I think, I think that's, that's real improvement to your original plan. So I think that's probably all I have. Schools are good. Yeah, I think that's all I have on my list of questions. So thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions, Mr. LaBarber?
No, I understand.
Mr. Miller, any questions?
Uh, no, I don't. Do you want me to leave the, the plan up for the, the public comments?
Uh, why don't you take it down for a moment, but if any member of the public commenting would like it back up, let us know, please, and we're happy to put it back up.
All right. There may be a delay bringing it back up.
Okay. All right. And I don't have any questions either. I think Mr. Wademan addressed any that I had there. So thank you for the presentation. Let's move on then to public comments. First of all, is there anyone from the public here who wishes to comment? All right. Judy, is it you? You are welcome to unmute and comment. We can't hear you right now, though.
Judy, you're still, you're still muted.
There we go.
All right.
You know, a lot of my questions have been answered. With the sewer thing, there was a pipe that was right on the other side on the apartment property within a few feet of our property where the smell was coming from and the.
It just ran, it clogged up.
It clogged up and it was sending the fumes and.
In the sewage.
It was really bad. I mean, you could actually see the sewage coming out of it. But hopefully they get that sewage issue fixed. One, one question I forgot to put on my questionnaire is when they, if they start this project, they're not going to block the road so the, the public can't use the road on Voorhees, are they? Or they can fall the building over onto their property?
I would imagine they would not. Mr. Miller, do you have any input on that?
Uh, if there's any roadwork within the right of way, they would have to get permits. We would, I highly doubt we would allow them to do any, any type of closure. You know, if there was like a tie-in or something to, you know, to sewer or water within the, the roadway right of way, there, there may be temporary closures or one-lane closures. But, but that would all be permitted. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't for any long-term block a road. And Judy, what was your address?
It's eighty-four eighty-one Voorhees.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other comments or questions, ma'am, or sir, if you're there?
Well, I had three, but they kind of answered them. At this point, I, I don't have any more questions.
Well, we had.
I had three.
Four.
Uh, but they were kind of answered.
We had three times the sewage overflowed in our yard.
Yeah, but they're going to address that.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. And they are going to put the six-foot fence up. That was one of my questions and they are going to do that.
It's a six, six-inch sewage problem.
Well, but the, the they're going to put the right size pipe in so that we don't have a sewage problem, I would imagine.
That appears to be the plan, ma'am. Yes. Yes. Okay.
Alex, can you just reiterate that?
Yeah, there are, there are certain, there are certain requirements in terms of what the, the capacity and flow is on the site. And they'll certainly meet that, that standard for pipe size.
So that, that's all we have at this time.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for commenting then. And is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Do we have anyone else signed up, Skylar?
Uh, we, we don't have folks that sign. They just register. So I don't believe in.
There's no one lurking out there with video off, is there?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the list right now. I think everyone else that's on the call is for the next case.
All right.
Maybe one final call.
Right. Final call here. If anyone from the public would like to speak up, going once, going twice. All right. Thank you. We will close public comments on this part of the hearing then. Did the applicant have anything further to add after the public comments?
No, I don't believe so. Chuck or Kirk, anything?
No.
Nope. No, thank you.
All right. Any further questions from trustees?
No.
All right. We will close this part of the hearing in terms of taking in evidence and input from everyone then. And trustees have any comments at this point, or do you wish to save deliberations until our, our full meeting?
No comments.
Okay.
No comments.
All right. We'll have a short discussion in our trustee meeting then about this and then we'll have a vote. So thank you, everyone, for participating. We'll call this part of the hearing to a close, but we have another case that we are now hearing, which is case number twenty-two-one dash zero four LASR.
Real quick, just, just for, just for presentation sake and for kind of organization, if, if you're from the previous case, but you want to stay on, just go ahead and turn your video off. And if you are part of this next case, twenty, twenty-two-one oh four laser, go, go ahead and you can turn your video on or, or be ready to participate. So it might, might save us a little, little confusion.
Yeah, thank you, Skylar.
Yep. All right. I'm going to turn my screen share on again. Okay, the next case I have before you is case number twenty-two-one dash zero four LASR. I've been referring it to a laser, as a laser, I think I'm the, the first planning and zoning administrator to do that, but I, I think I'll keep it up. So the request is for a localized alternative sign regulation for the, for the Redstone property that I think we're all familiar with. It's the, the property owner's sign company, Atlantic Sign Company, who's, who's our applicant tonight. Location of the property, again, Redstone, but that's seventy-seven fifty-five Montgomery Road. And essentially what we're doing, typically a laser would not come in front of board of trustees. But we have a couple of things that are, that are happening tonight. Number one, there's already an existing laser that was approved in the, for the site in two thousand nine. Major adjustments to PUDs, whether they're PUD ones or PUD twos, and a laser is considered a PUD one, requires a major adjustment. So the major adjustments come in front of the board. Additionally, this site falls within the Montgomery Road, Kenwood Road corridor overlay district. That's an SPI overlay district. So that also warrants a higher level review by the board of trustees. Okay. So again, there, there is an existing laser on the site that is two thousand nine dash eight LASR laser. Today, the applicant requests a laser approval for signage on the Redstone office building itself to include a maximum of three hundred square feet signage. The proposed signage plan specifies one center anchor sign at a hundred square feet maximum and four additional tenant signs at fifty square feet maximum. So that's the total for the site. I'm not talking about in addition to what's already there. That would be the total for the building. Just a brief overview. Since two thousand nine, this laser has been in place, the, the existing laser has been in place, which allows for a maximum of three large building signs not to exceed two hundred and fifty square feet. There were no signs permitted on the rear of the building because the north side of the building, the rear of the building is facing into a residential area. And then item three, which is, which is kind of an interesting one, provided that a tenant has direct access to the plaza. Each tenant may have one sign above their respective door entrance. No more than six tenant signs may be placed on the first floor facing Montgomery Road. If I was comparing this to another site that we have, this might be a, a smaller scale version of the Kenwood Collection signage plan. So we have an office building on top that is limited to, with, with office signage for the building. And then we have the retail component at the base, which, which certainly has less stringent signage allowances. So there's, there's signage all over the front and back.
So under the current rules, if there were a Chipotle and a yogurt shop and all that in there, they could have their own.
You got it. So, you know, over, over the history of this building, the, the site, the, the, the building hasn't developed that way. It's been, you know, solely used as office space. So, you know, item three, this type of signage hasn't been utilized, but it's on the books and it's allowed. And as we come into, you know, this new age for office buildings, you know, that this item three signage could be, could be leveraged. And each one of those would be based on the frontage of the, of the, the unit space they had. So that would be in addition to the, the three building signs. So then item four, proposed ground sign shall not exceed sixty-four square feet in sign surface area, shall not exceed nine feet in overall height, including the base, and shall have a base that is constructed of brick or stone to match the principal building. That's an existing sign and for the purposes of our conversation tonight, we're, we're silent on that. There's no proposal to change any site signage. So we're looking at the building only. Again, this is, this is the Redstone building, the township-owned properties, which are, which are zone multifamily and retail to the, to the east. We have single-family homes to the, to the west and to the north. And then we have commercial property across the street to the south. Okay. All right. So we don't have one picture showing all locations that are approved right now. So I want to show you a couple of pictures. You can see the gyro sign is, is already down, but that, that is the anchor sign. And there is area there that would allow for up to a hundred square feet of, of signage. Okay? You can see on the, on the far right side of the building, the east wing of the building, you can see the Morgan Stanley sign. The current configuration for the, for the property, you have Morgan Stanley, again, on that, that eastern wing. The western wing has Foster Motley. There is no anchor sign currently on the building. And what the applicant is proposing would be to remove any allowances for the first floor retail signage, retail style signage. And with that, there would be, in addition to the three currently permitted signs, there would be two additional signs at fifty square feet. So the center anchor sign, a hundred square feet, and then these four subordinate tenant locations would be a maximum of fifty square feet.
Are the existing signs larger than that already?
Barely. The, the Foster and my, the Foster and Motley sign is, is actually fifty-two square feet, which was allowed under the, the current laser. The Morgan Stanley, I believe we calculated that at about thirty-nine, give or take. Maybe it was thirty-seven point five, I'll have to go back and look, but it was, it was certainly smaller. The, the two, the two wing signs, the, the current ones, they actually have a larger brick facade. It's a little higher. So that, that's going to be a little more squared up. There are some physical limitations on the, on the side of the building. So you may have a fifty-square-foot sign, but it won't be as, I don't think it'll be as tall as the Foster Motley. It, it's going to be a little more constrained just because of the, the structure. It's going to be longer. Probably more in keeping with what you see with Morgan Stanley.
Under, and sorry to interrupt, but under the plan, would the signs have to be confined to the brick face? Or if there was a mounting method through which they could extend beyond it, but still be within fifty square feet, would that be permitted also?
They could. So right now, we're not proposing anything that would, that would limit that type of, of mounting. Aside from, aside from extending beyond the front face of the building, our, our code doesn't. Um, aside from, aside from extending beyond the front face of the building, our, our code doesn't, um, uh, wouldn't regulate that. So I'm saying, I guess I'm saying aesthetically, they're, they're going to be limited to the brick face, but yes, theoretically, you know, they could. Uh, un- unless we get, um, clarification from the applicant and make that a condition.
Okay.
So, you know, I, um, I, I've talked about this, uh, informally, uh, with the trustees, letting you know that, um, we do have a number of office buildings in the, uh, in the township, uh, that, that are talking about the, you know, this, this new era in, in office, uh, tenants, you know? I don't know if this is, you know, a response to the current COVID pandemic, or if this is a, you know, a, a true post-COVID, you know, new, new normal. I hate to say that, but, um, you know, we are looking at, uh, more tenants in smaller, uh, and smaller office spaces. So you're going to have, um, you know, more, more tenants per building. Uh, yeah, I, I think this is what's driving the, 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 the current laser proposals. Um, you know, I know historically the, the township has tried to limit signage as much as possible. Uh, so where we make allowances, it's, it's going to have to be reasonable. Um, but we, we also don't want to open the floodgates. So I, I understand there's some competing, uh, factors here. So with this, with this case in particular, um, I am, I, I'm willing to make a recommendation to, to approve, uh, the, this signage. The, the, the big, the big gain for here, there, there is a trade-off here. We're not just increasing signage for the sake of increasing signage. Um, we are deleting that, that old item three, which allows for the ground signs. Um, so if the board chooses to approve the applicant's request tonight, uh, I do have, um, um, some conditions that I would recommend be included in that resolution. Uh, item one just details what, uh, what the applicant proposed. Uh, a maximum of five building signs near, near the top facade of the building, not to exceed, uh, one center anchor sign at 100 square feet and four additional tenant signs at 50 square feet each shall be permitted. Number two, uh, this is in keeping with the, uh, the 2009 laser. No sign shall be permitted on the rear of the building. I'm deleting, uh, the old item three, and that's, uh, number four is being renumbered. The proposed ground sign shall not exceed 64 square feet in sign surface area. Uh, again, that's not changing as part of this plan. Item four, approval of 2021 dash zero four laser supersedes, uh, the 2009 dash eight laser. And, uh, number five, any sign affixed to the building at the time of this approval in excess of 50 square feet shall be permitted to remain for the duration of the current tenancy and any renewal by the same tenant. So this is specifically talking about, uh, the Foster and Motley sign, uh, and was something that came up during the, the zoning commission meeting. Uh, the zoning commission, uh, actually voted on this. It was, uh, it was a four zero vote. Uh, we had one applicant that felt that they had a, uh, a prior business relationship with this site and, uh, felt that it was best to abstain. Um, with that being said, um, again, the Foster Motley was, was in full compliance with, uh, with the, the, the old laser when it was installed. Um, you know, a, a two, uh, square foot increase in, in signage, uh, for, for that one space. Uh, I don't think it's significant enough to require the building to, to change, um, to change out a full sign. I, I don't think we're going to see a, a significant enough aesthetic change to require that. So, uh, the, the zoning commission did recommend that we make that allowance.
Question for you before I ask for questions from others here. Uh, are lasers precedential in some way? If we were to approve a certain ratio of signage to building face here and some other applicant in the township with a big building comes to us with something similar, do we need to approve theirs too?
Yeah. Um, I, I won't pretend to be the law director and give a full legal opinion on this, but I, I'm going to say no. A, uh, a laser is essentially a PUD one, and we allow for, uh, specific site design criteria that takes into account the, um, the existing situation on a site on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, if we develop a pattern, you know, um, you know, can, can someone make an argument that, that we're, we're creating a precedent? That's, that's something to be argued in court. But in and of itself, a laser would not set a new standard across the board, uh, for, you know, that, that's why we have, we have chapter 13 signs in zoning resolution, which do, that, that does set the standard. This is a special exception to that, which our code provides for.
All right. Uh, Mr. Wedeman or Mr. LaBarber, any questions for Mr. Miller?
Um, I don't have any at this time.
I do. Um, one of the, one of the, um, anchor clients is, uh, Foster Motley, and we all received, uh, a, a letter objecting to this. Can you explain that, Skylar?
Yes. Um, actually, I, I, I do need to make mention of that. Thank you for, for bringing that up. Um, we did receive one, uh, one negative comment and, uh, uh, both, um, both in, in letter form and, uh, uh, a, a representative from Foster Motley was at the, um, zoning commission meeting to, to speak against this. Uh, essentially, they felt that, uh, additional signage on the building, uh, would not, um, would not aesthetically benefit the, uh, um, the site. They, they liked the clean, um, you know, uh, the clean, high-quality lines of, of the Redstone and thought that this, you know, would potentially impact that. And they did not feel that, um, it would, it would hinder the, um, uh, the property manager's ability to, um, you know, to, to bring new tenants in, um, you know, whether or not they got a, 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 a sign on the face of the building. So, and that was their opinion.
And that was the only comment we received in writing from anyone?
Yes.
Now you take away the six signs on the bottom today. Tomorrow, Chipotle says we're going to put a store there. We want to come in that building.
Uh huh.
Now what?
They don't get a sign on the building.
They don't get a sign. Okay.
They don't get a sign on the building.
Okay.
You know, um, and do we want to, do we want to talk about giving them a, uh, you know, um, you know, and a, an engraved vinyl on a, on, you know, window pane or door or something that they're going to have to come back in, uh, for a major adjustment to a laser, even for something like that. So, um, you know, by, by modifying the laser, um, especially doing it in front of the board of trustees, you know, we are, we are setting a, a, a high standard. Any change, any deviation from this plan will require another major adjustment.
One more question. Well, on the signs, I see, okay, you have on the, uh, right side, um, you have the Morgan Stanley. Okay. Now the next sign that goes over there, Morgan Stanley, can they have another sign over there where future says, it says future? Can Morgan Stanley, then if they have, if they rent all that space, can they put Morgan Stanley there?
Um, we haven't. So, so I would say typically, no, that, that wouldn't be a good practice. Um, you know, that's certainly a, we can, we can write that in as a condition that one sign per, you know, a maximum of one sign per tenant would be allowed.
We can add that.
I, I can add that. I just need a little bit of time to, to adjust the resolution. So.
Any further questions?
That's all I have.
All right. Let, let's hear from the applicant. But before we do that, if I may, anyone from the applicant or the public who wishes to speak, I haven't sworn you in for this hearing yet, and I would like to do that first. So, uh, if each of you would unmute yourselves for a moment, if you do intend to speak during this, raise your right hand if you are so able and, uh, repeat, or do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or pursue to affirmation?
I do.
All right. Let the record reflect, anyone who is going to speak has been sworn. If anyone does speak later and you were not sworn in, please advise us of that, and we will swear you then. Uh, so who do we have first from the applicant here?
My name is Mike Cassidy. Uh, my company is Preferred Resources. We're a graphic and signage consultant company, and I work closely with Atlantic Sign Company, uh, representing the Scott Street Partners on this application. Uh, first, I would just want to, tell Scott, thank you very much for a, a very good presentation, really covers most of the, um, the issues. Uh, there is a little bit of confusion, confusion on this, uh, property. You know, we're currently permitted three, three signs, three building signs, up to 250 square feet. And basically what we're asking for is just two additional signs. It's not the total five signs, but it would be written into the laser. In that way, um, it would be written in for five signs, total 300 square feet with four signs at 50 square feet and one anchor tenant at 100 square feet, whereas right now we have three signs at 250 square feet. So it's a little bit confusing, but I think when we, we look forward with the laser, uh, it, it's not quite, uh, i- it's difficult to, to pull it all together. Tonight, we have, um, Maria Fox and, uh, Nick Davis with the Scott Street Partners, who are also here. Um, and I think between Skylar's letter and, or Skylar's presentation and my letter, uh, I think we pretty well clarified most of what we're looking for. I will tell you that, um, currently there's a, about a 20% vacancy in the building. And as I explained to the variance board, uh, one of the primary concerns and questions that a, a lot of the, uh, potential Leesies are looking for is can they get a signature sign on a building externally, e- exterior? And by having this arrangement with five, uh, signs that can be made available, uh, that will alleviate a, a big concern that, uh, Scott Street Partners has in regards to being able to present vacancy to potential Leesies. Uh, right now, I, I heard the statistic, uh, a couple of weeks ago before the variance board that the building actually has a capacity of 565, uh, people. And currently there is only about 65 to 75 in the building itself. Now, part of that, I can tell you that my wife works for Drees, both in their commercial and the residential. And we have seen a, a, a substantial pullback in occupancy. Um, she currently works at home. Uh, a, a major, uh, portion of the Drees company works from home. Uh, the projection is to maintain that status to at least the, uh, end of this year. Will we see, uh, this type of approach? I- is really difficult to say. We all, if we all could project this and we had a, a bet with Las Vegas, we could probably go and win a lot of money if we knew exactly how all this was going to pan out. But I, I think the new normal, i- i- and we saw previous to COVID, pre-COVID, that there was a lot of, uh, employment, stay-at-home type of, uh, work structure that was put together. So I think we will see that in the future. I'm, I'm confident that we will. And for Scott Street Partners to try and entice additional Leesies to look at their property seriously, to have the availability of an exterior sign for a major tenant i- is conducive to, to, to their business itself. So, uh, as I mentioned, I think between Skylar's presentation and, uh, what was covered in my letter, I think we pretty well have a, a, a reasonable overview of how and why we're looking for these two additional signs to the three that are already permitted.
Thank you, sir. Marie or Nick, did you have anything to add?
I would just add that, you know, for Redstone to be able to attract what would be Class A office tenants, the majority of those you want to attract would be those of, of considerable square footage. Um, and those tenants do want to have the ability to have their names on the outside of the building. Um, and at the point that you only have three placements, um, you're only, we're only going to be able to offer one more. Um, and we do have another tenant in this building who has a floor and a half that doesn't even have their name on the building today, that could, um, by size, but has chosen not to put their name on the building. Um, if they wanted to, but they have allowed to, um, have that space open to other tenants just because they happen to be the owner of the building and know that it's an important aspect to have available to attract tenants to the building. Um, and so they know how important that is and want to make sure that it's an, an asset to be able to, um, attract other tenants. Um, and they do understand that having the signage higher up in the building, so giving up the ones at the floor level and giving those up for the ones that are higher up in the building is going to be more important in leasing going forward because, um, you probably know that the deal velocity for office tenants today is not like it was pre-COVID. Um, hopefully that does come back. Um, but in order to continue for Redstone to be a Class A building, we're going to have to kind of change up how we do deals, right? Um, and we're going to have to be able to, um, attract the deals in maybe a slightly different way. And some of that is to be able to have a signage availability to maybe switch up our terms a little bit and, um, be able to be ready for when the deal velocity hopefully picks back up.
Thanks, Marie. Nick, anything to add? All right. Um, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Wedeman, any questions? Nope. All right. Um, thank you very much then. Um, I don't have any questions either. We'll hear from the public then at this point. Uh, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? One more time, anyone from the public wishing to comment? If so, uh, turn on your video, please, and unmute.
Uh, I, I, I believe I had a, uh, I, it, it's been almost, uh, a month now, but I believe I had a conversation with the, uh, the gentleman from, uh, Foster Motley. And I think there was a scheduling conflict tonight, so I.
So they're not here to comment?
Yeah. Okay. I, I could be wrong about that, but I, I seem to recall that in passing.
But let me ask, uh, Marie, if I could. I, I understand Foster and Motley, who is the only, uh, objector to this that we've heard from in written form, is a tenant in the building now. Um, are there any concerns they've raised, you're aware of, that you'd like to address?
So Foster Motley did not make us aware of any concerns prior to the zoning meeting. Um, and we were not aware of that until they voiced the opinion on zoning meeting itself. Um, and I would think that if it remained the same, and at some point we did put five signs on the first level, if that happened that way, there are concerns that it would make the front of the building look, um, um, aesthetically different as today. The five signs on the bottom would look worse than the two signs up at the top, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you very much then. Uh, la- last chance for anyone from the public, if anyone's popped in. Going once, going twice. Very good. All right. Um, anything further to add from anyone then? Hearing nothing? Very good. We will close the hearing at this point in terms of taking in evidence and information and arguments. I'd like to thank everybody for participating in this. Um, and we will close the hearing at this point. We'll take our votes in our trustee meeting, which convenes in a little over 20 minutes, 21 minutes. It's 6:39 PM right now. Um, so is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
To adjourn.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Wedeman, Mr. LaBarber made the motion in here. Is there a second? All right. I'll second the motion to adjourn. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned at 6:39 PM. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular trustee meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.